Comm. Donelson.
Here.
Comm. Gunkel.
Here.
Comm. Keller.
Here.
Comm. Coomerly.
Here.
Comm. Tan has an excused absence this evening. V.C. Moss.
Present.
And C. Cardoza.
Here.
So, we have a quorum of six commisioners.
Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Items not on the agenda. We'll see none. Next item on the agenda is action recap. Do we have any comments or corrections?
I would move approval.
Second.
Unanimous?
Actually, the one item that I did see on here is it was, I was attributed as correcting the spelling of EPE, but that was Comm. Tan. So, the correction should be corrected.
Correction should be corrected, all right. So, Gunkel should say Tan.
With that, do we have a second?
Got it. I think we already did.
Oh, okay.
That's like a friendly amendment or something?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Director's Report.
All right. I'd like to report to you on the recent actions of the City Council since your last meeting. They have held two meetings in June, one on June 3rd and one on June 17th. On June 3rd, the Council heard interviews for the two Planning Commission positions that are up for appointment, and then they voted to reappoint Commissioners Donelson and Cardoza. So, congratulations to Buzz and Gale for three more years.
The competition was stiff.
It was. The Council held a public hearing on a proposed charter for the city. The charter would be very brief, stipulating that Emeryville may collect enhanced real estate transfer taxes, but otherwise would operate as a general law city. Three people spoke in support at the hearing. The charter is expected to be on the November ballot. The Council approved the 2014 to 2019 five-year capital improvement program, and they authorized budget appropriations for it. They also approved the fiscal year 2014-15 and 2015-16 operating budget. Part of this budget, as you know, includes reorganizing the Planning and Building Department and the Economic Development and Housing Department into a new Community Development Department. Finally, on June 3rd, the Council authorized the City Manager to execute an agreement for the exchange of property and a project improvements agreement for the proposed Parkside Park, and you will be hearing more about that project in just a few minutes. On June 17th, the Council held a study session on the Emeryville-Berkley-Oakland Transit Study, also known as E-bots. They heard from speakers, and then they made a number of valuable and insightful comments that will inform the recommendations which are now going to be developed. On personnel matters, the Mesa Board, that's the Management of Emeryville Services Authority, which is the City Council by another name, approved the retitling of my position, Planning and Building Director, to Community Development Director with the added responsibility of overseeing the Economic Development and Housing Division. And they created a new Economic Development and Housing Manager position, which is a reclassification of the former Economic Development and Housing Director position. As I previously reported to you in an email earlier this week, we will be recruiting for that new manager position, which is expected to take several months. And in the meanwhile, Michelle De Guzman has been appointed as the Acting Economic Development and Housing Manager. Finally, the Council approved a contract with West Coast Code Consultants, also known as WC3, to continue to provide services to the Building Division in fiscal year 2014 and 15. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
I have a question on the E-bots. What's the next step, and who does it go to?
Next step is the preparation of a, I guess it would be a draft report with recommendations in it, and it will come back to the Planning Commission and City Council for consideration, as well as all the other agencies that are involved.
And who's making the recommendations in that report? Because I know there's two bodies for the E-bots.
Well, I don't know that we've actually, don't know that we have an official recommender. You might say that it's the Technical Advisory Committee and the Policy Advisory Committee.
So, will it go to both committees beforehand?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm looking to Diana, who is our project manager, who knows more about this than I do.
Yeah, I could barely see her over the podium there, but yeah, I see.
Do you want to add anything, Diana?
So, it should go to both committees?
Yeah, maybe Diana can embellish a little bit what I've said.
Due to the input we got, we scheduled a technical advisory committee meeting for a little earlier than we were going to, so we could decide what the plan's going to say. That's going to happen in July, and then we will, the consultants will develop the draft, and we'll have some semblance of what it's going to say in time for the September 8th Policy Advisory Committee meeting. And then, we will release a draft. Your September meeting is on October 2nd, right? Something like that? So, I think you'll be seeing it then, and then the Council later. I don't have the schedule right in front of me. And so, there's a study session for you and one for the Council, the Transportation Committee too, and then we'll make a final plan and bring it back in December and January.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. Thank you, Diana. As you may know, under the terms of the grant that we have from Caltrans to do this study, we have to be done by next February. So, we're, there's no wiggle room in our schedule. We're just marching ahead. Any other questions? Okay.
Does that complete the Director's Report?
Yes. I have nothing besides the Council actions to report this month.
Next item on the agenda is public hearings. First item will be pain and rehabilitation consultants management group parking lot.
And I need to recuse myself.
Thanks.
As you know, this is Miru Desai's project, but she is on vacation, so I'm going to wing it on her behalf. Okay, this may look familiar to you. In November 2008, the Council approved a mixed-use project known as Parkside Residential Project, formerly Paper Mill, and it's now going through a number of new name changes. We're not sure what the name is. At this point, we think it's Park on Powell, P-A-R-C on Powell. The project included construction of a public park and replacement of a parking lot that had 41 private parking spaces owned by the owners of the building across the street at 1335 Stanford Avenue. In February 2012, the City Council approved the design for the parking, for the park, that should say, and parking lot upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission. This drawing shows those parcels. This is the current layout of the parcels. You have two privately-owned parcels that are shown here in red that are surrounded by city-owned, a city-owned property that has a couple of holes in it. This currently is a parking lot, and the public part of it is open to the public to use, and the private part of it is only open to PRC to use. The reconfigured parking lot and park design is this. This came out of a long process. I know there were questions about this last time. If you really want me to go into it, I do have another PowerPoint presentation that I can bring up that goes through all the iterations of all the different design schemes that were considered before this was arrived at. But the idea is to have a parking lot at the east end of the site with access from Doyle Street, and then the rest of the site would become the city park, which of course requires us to reconfigure the property lines. This is a drawing that's a little more refined. This shows the actual design of the park and parking lot that was approved by the Planning Commission and City Council. Now, as you may recall, because of the desire to save these trees down here, this design is going to be changed a little bit before it's actually constructed, but it will essentially be the same. The parking lot design itself has not changed. This shows the new configuration of the parcels. This is a proposed parcel map. This parcel map has not been recorded yet, but this is what it is going to end up looking like. The PRC, Private Parking Lot parcel will be here, matching the configuration of the new parking lot, and then the city parcel will be here, and it will have two fingers that go down either side of the parking lot. When the general plan was adopted in October 2009, all of the parcels in this block, including the Parkside Apartment property and the parking lot, had a land use designation of mixed-use with residential, a floor area ratio designation of 1.2 to 1.6, a maximum building height of 30 to 55 feet, and a maximum residential density of none. The Parkside parcel actually did have a residential density of 50 to 60, I believe, on it, but the southern part where the parking lot was had no designation. When the planning regulations were adopted in 2013, the zoning map designated the park and parking lot parcels as PO, Park Open Space. As part of the negotiations for the land swap, PRC has now requested that the proposed parking lot parcel be rezoned back to MUR, which was what the zoning of it was when they purchased their property in 2010. As you know, this item was considered by the Commission at your last meeting on May 22nd, but due to a notification error, not everybody was notified, who should have been, it must now be reconsidered by the Commission. So, the proposal, and I would note that at your May 22nd meeting, you modified the staff recommendation, you lowered the residential density to the lowest category, you lowered the height limit to the lowest category, you did not change the FAR, however. Our recommendation now at this point is that you put all three of those things at the lowest category, because in our opinion, it doesn't make sense to have a high FAR and then a low residential density height limit. They should all be in the same ballpark, we think. So, the amendment for the general plan would be to add a maximum residential density of 20 to 35 to the parking lot parcel. That's the lowest possible residential density unless we create a new category. Redesigning the city-owned park parcel in the general plan from mixed-use with residential to park open space, and also removing the other park opportunity circle on the land use diagram, changing the maximum height to 30 feet no bonus for both properties. So far, this is what you did at your last meeting, and the new thing is changing the maximum FAR to 0.5 no bonus for both properties. And then, the rezoning would be to rezone the proposed parking lot parcel from park open space to MUR mixed-use with residential. So, here's some maps that illustrate all of that. This would be the new land use map, and you can see, it's right here, and you can see the green circle there that's currently on the map that designates the other park opportunity, which really is kind of redundant with the park open space zoning. So, we would remove that green circle from the map, and here is a blow-up of what it would look like. The green circle actually should be on this side, because this is the before condition, but it's not there, so I wanted to point it out in the bigger map. So, currently, the entire block is mixed-use with residential in the general plan, land use diagram, and these two little things right here are the PRC parcels. The proposal would be to redesignate the new PRC parcel to MUR, similar to the Parkside parcel, and then all of the surrounding city property would be designated park open space. On the residential density map, it's right here, and just to blow that up, currently there is no designated residential density on the park or the parking lot parcel, but there is on the Parkside Apartments parcel. So, this proposal would be to redesignate only the parking lot parcel with the lowest residential density. It doesn't show up very well, at least on the screen up there. I'm not sure what it looks like on your monitors, but this color here is not the same as this color here. It's this color over here. It's the lower residential density. And on the height limit map, it's right here. Currently, it is 30 to 55 over the entire area, including the park and parking lot parcel, and this is a lighter shade of blue. It's the same as this blue over here. It's basically 30 feet with no bonus. And then, this is the new thing, the FAR map. The proposal would be to drop the FAR to the lowest possible category, which is 0.5 no bonus. It's 1.2 to 1.6 now, and this is what it would look like if we reduced both parcels to 0.5 no bonus. And finally, for the rezoning, this is what that would look like, and if we blow up this area right here, you can see currently both the city property and the PRC property are zoned park open space. The rezoning would rezone the proposed PRC parcel to MUR, and it would leave the city property as park open space. So, to approve a general plan amendment, the Commission must make a recommendation to the Council outlining the reasons for the recommendation, its consistency with the general plan guiding principles, its internal consistency with other provisions of the general plan, and consistency with other adopted plans. As I said, when the general plan was being developed, the Parkside project, including the public park, had not yet been approved, and therefore, the general plan, land use diagram, designates the entire block as MUR. A potential new park is indicated with a green circle. By the time the planning regulations were adopted in 2013, the park and parking lot had been designed, so the zoning map designated the properties as park open space. Request to rezone the parking lot provides an opportunity for us now to bring consistency between the general plan land use diagram and the zoning map by designating the PRC parking lot parcel as MUR in both the general plan and the zoning, and the park parcel as park open space in both the general plan and the zoning. For the rezoning, the Planning Commission must make the following findings: that the proposed amendment is consistent with the general plan, that it's necessary for the public health, safety, and general welfare, or will be of benefit to the public, that it complies with SEQA, and that it is, the subject property is suitable for use as permitted in the proposed zone. The proposed amendment to rezone the PRC parking lot from PO to MUR is consistent with the general plan. The parking lot meets the parking requirements for the PRC office located across the street, and it is therefore a more appropriate designation of MUR. I would also just like to note that, I'm not sure if, I didn't point this out, but on the parcel map, there is a proposed 20-foot-wide easement that would go not quite through the middle, but a little bit offset through the parking lot parcel and also through the city parcel. That's where there's a big, I think it's a water line. It would be difficult, if not impossible, to build anything on that easement, and given the small size of the parcel and the lowest, the proposed lowest residential density, lowest height limit, and lowest FAR, and that easement, it's unlikely that anybody would be able to build much of anything on it. It's simply a matter of fairness. The PRC would like the property to be zoned the same as it was when they bought their property, so that's, and they view the park open space rezoning that occurred in 2013 as a devaluation of their property, so they would just like it to be back to MUR. So, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council that they approve the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
So, right now, the parking is meeting their requirements for their building across the street, correct?
Yes.
And if their property were to be sold, there would still be the requirement for that parking across the street?
Well, it depends. If their building were to be sold for the same use and no physical changes, yes, they'd still need that parking. If it were to be sold and repurposed as for some other use, it would probably have a different parking requirement, so it may not need as much parking, or it might need more. And if they were able to find another location for the parking, for example, inside the building, as some people have done, then they might not need that for parking any longer. But as I said, you can't build anything very big on that little parcel.
Now, the current building they're in, would that be classified as a tier one?
That designation only applies within the Park Avenue District. I can't recall if it was one of our significant structures. Do you remember, Diana? 1335 Stanford, where PRC is?
Sure doesn't look like it.
Sorry, I'm putting her on the spot. I don't think it is.
But for demolition and to build something where you could put parking into, that would more likely have to go to us and the City Council to get a demolition permit?
Well, not for the demolition, but a new building definitely would require a major designer view, if not a use permit from the Planning Commission. I was actually referring to putting parking inside the existing building. I don't know if it's feasible in that building, but in one block to the east, the, what is it called, Icon on Doyle, that's an old industrial building, and they put the parking for that residential project inside the building.
And built on top.
And built on top. So, it's not, you know, unheard of.
I just see that building as being a typical Emeryville brick building that I think most people here would not like to see destroyed or altered, so, but there's nothing that in our guidelines that prevents that currently?
Not unless it gets designated as a significant structure. And I have to say that the City Council, the direction we got from them when we brought the significant structure list to them was that it was too long, and we needed to take things off of it, because we should only be designating the really special buildings. Any further questions?
If the property, if the properties with the parking were to be sold to a different user, that didn't actually change the nature of the use classification, if the parking lot were zoned park open space, would it then have to be, I mean, would it be grandfathered in under those circumstances as a parking lot?
Yes, and it's not entirely clear to me that that's not permitted in the park open space zone anyway. It would be accessory, parking is accessory to another use, and an accessory use is okay in, you know, even in a different zoning district.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does the owner or owner's representative wish to speak?
I don't, we don't have anything to add, thank you.
Any members of the public wish to speak on this?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, I mean, for, I don't know if there's a better alternative, but it seems pretty clear to me that if there isn't one, this does seem to limit the likelihood of the parking lot being developed, and I think the concern of the neighbors in my neck of the woods is that the, you know, they all bought into this as a park and open space continuation or connection of the existing park. And, I mean, ideally, this would be zoned park open space, and the parking lot would be allowed within it. But if that's not a scenario that can be coordinated with the owner, between the city and the owner, I do think that the height limitations and the floor area ratio that have been proposed would make it pretty unlikely that any development would occur there or be feasible within the near future.
Thank you. Close the public meeting. Do you wish to make a motion?
Well, I think, not yet a motion, but I think with what we've done with the parcel, with staff recommendations, and what we did in the past thing, and looking at the building across the street, although that's not a tier one, I think it's pretty significant as it is, being a brick building and having that industrial look and backing up to spirally. I don't think the city, the residents, or our current council would really vote to demolish that building, to allow something new to be built that will handle parking as well as a new use. And then, with this designation that we're creating, I don't think that this parcel across the street is really viable for development. But I think if what the owners are just asking for is to have the classification back to what it was when they purchased the property, I think that's pretty reasonable. So, I think as Citizen Gunkel had said, it's a happy medium, and it is a compromise, and I think that's what this is all about. So, that's just my two cents.
Any further comment?
Well, yeah, it is kind of a fine line there. I mean, I think as long as it remains parking, it's not an ideal use, but it's an acceptable use because it keeps it visually open. The general plan designated the area as a potential park site without a size on it. It didn't say that it's going to be a half-acre park site, or it's going to be this much of the block or anything, so I don't know that there was a guarantee that there was going to be that mixed-use with residential zoning that stayed on that site. And if the parking lot can remain under a park and open space designation, I would really, really not like to see building on that site, but, you know, it's a question of, if we are putting so many restrictions that they can't build on it anyway, why don't we just continue to call it park and open space?
Well, because I, my understanding is the owners would then not agree to the transfer of the property, and we would have two small parking lots on that site and no park.
But also, I mean, we can't do that. I mean, we can't put so many restrictions on it that it can't be, you know, used for an economically viable use.
So, are you saying that what we're, what is being proposed allows for construction on the site, or it makes it likely, or?
It allows for something. I mean, you could, I would assume, on the non-easement area, one could build a small building of, you know, one story or something, but...
Could move some mobile homes in, I would say.
And they'd have to, they'd have to provide parking for that building as well.
Presumably.
As well as what's still across the street. So, in realistic terms, it's pretty much unrealistic that something could be built there.
Can you describe how this ended up, the park design, it took years, the Parkside project took years, how this ended up coming before us now that the property needs to be, you know, taken back to mixed MRE?
Well, it's kind of an evolution of things. Doing land swaps takes a long time and involves a lot of attorneys, and a lot of meetings, and a lot of documents, and a lot of negotiations. I think this all started a year or two ago. You know, it's sort of an iterative process. We had to get the design nailed down first, had to prepare the parcel map, you know, hire the engineers, do all that stuff, and at some point during these negotiations, PRC realized that the property had been rezoned from what it was when they purchased it. They didn't realize that from the beginning, and I have to say frankly, I didn't either. When I, I was a little surprised when I looked at the general plan and saw that the whole thing was MUR, because I thought we had designated it as park open space, and then I remembered, oh, no, we didn't do that till we got around to the zoning, and we hit, the green circle on the map was kind of a placeholder to indicate there will be a park in this area somewhere. But it wasn't until probably about midway through the negotiations that PRC realized that...
Can you describe how this ended up, the park design, it took years, the park side project took years, how this ended up coming before us now that the property needs to be, you know, taken back to, is mixed M R.
Well, it's kind of an evolution of things. Doing land swaps takes a long time and involves a lot of attorneys, and a lot of meetings, and a lot of documents, and a lot of negotiations. I think this all started a year or two ago. You know, it's sort of an iterative, iterative process. We had to get the design nailed down first, had to prepare the parcel map, you know, hire the engineers, do all that stuff. And at some point during these negotiations, PRC realized that the property had been rezoned from what it was when they purchased it. They didn't realize that from the beginning, and I have to say frankly, I didn't either. When I, I was a little surprised when I looked at the general plan and saw that the whole thing was MUR, because I thought we had designated it as park open space, and then I remembered, oh, no, we didn't do that till we got around to the zoning, and we hit, the, the green circle on the map was kind of a placeholder to indicate there'll be a park in this area somewhere. But it wasn't until probably about midway through the negotiations that PRC realized that this isn't what, this has been changed, this zoning has been changed since when we bought the property. So that's when they asked for, for it to be rezoned. And that occurred several months ago, and it just took a while to get it on the commission agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I want to just say, I actually like the original staff recommendation from our last meeting better. I think it's, given that the general plan designation is MUR, the existing general plan designation, I think that that recommendation makes the zoning more consistent and compatible with the general plan. But that said, I will, I think, support the new staff recommendation. I, I don't, I'm not super comfortable with it because I think it makes the maps messy. I don't think it's, I don't think it's great land use planning, but, you know, I will support it because it's better than the alternative in my mind.
I would point out that it's not unprecedented. In fact, if you just look across Doyle Street, on the east side of Doyle, all the way from Stanford up to 59th Street, those parcels are all zoned, are all designated in the general plan as MUR, and I believe they're also zoned as MUR. And they have the lowest floor area ratio, they have the lowest height limit, and they have the lowest residential density. So this would be the same thing.
So I'll make a motion to approve it as recommended and forward it on to the city council.
A second.
We have a roll call?
All right. Moved by Commissioner Keller and seconded by Commissioner Moss. Commissioner Donaldson?
I'm still going to vote no, just because I think that originally, the park designation was on that general piece of property, and that I don't think that there ever should be a building on that location, so.
Commissioner Coomerly?
No.
Commissioner, let's see, Commissioner Gunkel is recused. Who am I missing?
Diane.
Keller. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped you. Commissioner Keller?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Chair Moss?
Aye.
Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
Three ayes, two noes. The motion is approved. We will forward your recommendation to the city council, which will hear it at their meeting next Tuesday.
Item is closed. Next item on the agenda is the housing element.
Good evening. I'm Kim Obstfeld with PMC. I was here for a study session not too long ago to talk about the housing element. Glad to be back, thank you. We have at this point completed a draft housing element, and we're here tonight to present it and hear your initial comments and feedback. We are looking at this point to take any, any comments, any suggestions from you, and then from city council, and then take the document to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, for their initial 60-day review. They'll give us then notes on whether or not they feel it is in compliance with, with statutes and with state law. So, a quick overview tonight, we did cover some of the components of the housing element during the last, during the study session, so tonight, I'd like to just really focus on the regional housing needs allocation and the analysis that we performed there to, to show how we can accommodate that RENA figure, and then also talk about key program changes, the big differences between your existing housing element and what we're looking at for the new planning period. So just a quick recap on the, on the update process and where we're at with it. So again, we started with the existing housing element, which has not been around for too long. It's a, it's a very current document, did what we needed to do, reviewed all of the policies and programs, took a look at the demographic data, took a look at changes that have happened as a result of your, changes to your planning regulations and your land use controls, and developed a draft document. Throughout the course of that, we sought a community input and feedback, and, and of course, developed a draft housing element which you, which you have in your hands now. And again, we'll take that to HCD for their initial review, come back around, having revised the document to meet anything that HCD wants to see, and present it again to you for final review and for adoption. After that, we'll go back to the state for, for certification review. And typically, unless there's any significant change that occurs as a result of the adoption hearings, it's really just a formality at that point. So again, just a reminder on the schedule, we issued the public review draft, or made it available to the public, May 23rd, so it's been on the street for a little over a month now. It was posted to the webpage, and we sent out notifications to everyone on our stakeholder list and continuing to keep people informed. We have taken the complete draft to Housing Committee. It went before the committee on June 4th. Of course, we're here this evening, and then we intend to take it to city council on July 15th. We're hoping to submit the draft to HCD as soon as possible after that meeting. I've been in close contact with HCD throughout, and they're expecting sort of an onslaught of Bay Area housing elements towards late summer, so we're hoping to kind of beat the rush there and, and stay on track for the streamlined review. We did have an informal meeting with Paul McDougall from the HCD. They had meetings at ABAG a couple of months ago, I guess two months ago, and got sort of the very informal thumbs up on some of the basics of our housing element, actually the pieces that we'll be talking about this evening. They were generally on board with our approach to meeting the RENA, and took a quick review of our, our policies and programs, and we're feeling like we were in, in good shape and on track. So we don't anticipate any hiccups during the review, and again, we're eligible for streamlined review, so I've been seeing that, the most recently, come in at about 25 to 30 days. Again, it can take up to the full 60-day review period. So we will probably see you for that October 2nd meeting, but it just depends on how the review process goes with HCD. Just a reminder on community input, like I said, we, we've been maintaining a webpage. We've posted the draft document to the webpage. It's been there for a little over a month. That webpage has also featured presentations from all of the meetings and study sessions that we've done, and at one point, it had an online survey that was available for a couple of months there, so trying to, to be as transparent as possible during the update process. We also held a community workshop, and that was done back in March, and then did a, a sit-down meeting with representatives from community organizations and nonprofit housing developers. We called it our Housing and Service Provider Roundtable in April. We've attended three housing committee meetings thus far, and then did study sessions with the planning commission and the city council. At this point, I'll, I'll start in on the regional housing needs allocation, and we talked a little bit about this at our last meeting, so I won't go into too much detail about the process. But again, HCD comes up with a statewide projection for the RENA planning period, and just as a note, the RENA period varies just a little bit from the housing element planning period, just to add a little bit of extra confusion to this document. It's actually for the 2014 to 2022 period, whereas the housing element planning period is from 2015 to 2023. So if you see that, it's not a mistake, it's actually just one of those funky things. But it's determined on a statewide level, and then pushed down to regional organizations. For us, that's ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments. They then work with cities and counties, come up with a methodology, and push those numbers out to cities and counties within, within their realm. Our allocation for 2014 to 2022 was 1,498 units. And that, just a note, that is up a bit from our 2007 to 2014 allocation, which was 1,137 units. For most jurisdictions throughout the Bay Area, they saw actually a decrease, the, the ABAG wide number was lower, but there was a big push, and the methodology this time focused heavily on creating that link between jobs and housing, and focusing additional housing infill on, in PDAs. So focusing heavily on priority development areas, which is why Emeryville ticked up a little bit on the allocation. The allocation is then further broken down into income categories. ABAG gives us numbers for very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income projections, and then state law requires us to break that down further to include the extremely low-income category. So all told, the lower income categories make up about 33% of our allocation. So in looking at the capacity to accommodate the RENA, and, you know, just a caveat to this, it's, showing capacity to accommodate the RENA is, is really a land use exercise. It's, it's not a mandate, we don't have to build these units, there's not an expectation that the city will in any way build these units, but we do need to show that if the market chooses to build these units, and certainly will include programs to help facilitate affordable housing, but there's no, no requirement that we actually put these units on the ground, so simply a land use exercise. So we are able to show that in a couple of ways. We broke it down really into two categories. The first is projects that we already have in the works, so projects that have already been through the planning process, who have approvals, and we also lumped in some projects that are almost there, so you may have seen them once or twice, the Nady site, maybe other properties that aren't fully entitled, but they're far enough along in the process that we have a concrete program. We, we know how many units we can expect on the site, and have an idea of whether or not there's going to be an affordable component. So, for example, sorry, did you want to jump in?
Well, just before you left, that, I want to just clarify that the ABAG doesn't require that we build these, but isn't funding tied to meeting this goal, and also, are we vulnerable to lawsuits if we don't meet these projections?
No, not if you don't meet the projections. If you don't comply by showing that you can accommodate them, then that's when you start to see some trouble. You do need to report to the state on an annual basis where you're tracking and meeting these goals, but there's no penalty for not having met them. So again, for planned and approved projects, so again, a portion of these we know are going to be affordable units. So for example, the 3706 San Pablo project, we're expecting a planning application or a full application later in the summer, but we do know based on the process and what the project is, that there's going to be a strong affordability or exclusively affordable component there, so we're, we're taking credit for those units. On the vacant and underutilized side is where it's a little bit more, more open, and I know it looks a little bit funky that we've shown such a large capacity on the lower income side with a smaller capacity on the moderate and above moderate, when we know in reality the vast majority of the units that are produced are going to be affordable for those earning higher incomes in the moderate and above moderate. But because we're unable to project with any certainty where and how many affordable units are going to be produced over the course of, you know, the next eight years, the state came up with a default density standard, so for jurisdictions and urban areas, it, the minimum default, or the standard default density is 30 units per acre. So they said at that, at that threshold level, it's feasible for an affordable housing developer to come in and, and get an affordable project done and on the ground. For jurisdictions like Emeryville, that 30 units per acre looks a little silly, because that's, that's on the much lower end of your spectrum, but that does mean that we have this huge capacity that we can show of, of sites that meet that threshold. So that's what we're talking about when we look at that vacant and underutilized number, is how many sites meet state requirements to show that it's at the right density and with the right land use standards to, to make a project happen if one was brought forward. So hopefully, that, that makes enough sense. And then just to kind of give you a sense of where we're at, so on this map, the darker red parcels are, those properties that are highlighted in the dark red are those that are already underway. We have a development program, we, we have a pretty good sense of what that, that site is going to look like. The vacant and underutilized are those with the, the sort of hash there. And we've, we've reached pretty far, and, and we talked a little bit about this at the housing committee, that what is the real likelihood that the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center is going to redevelop as housing, or Powell Street Plaza and some of these bigger sites? But the reality is that they are underutilized. If you look at the floor area ratio, if you look at those large surface parking lots, and look at what your general plan envisioned for some of these sites, there's a real possibility that a developer could choose to undertake that project, and that there would be a large housing component based on things that we've seen in the past. The marketplace redevelopment is an excellent example of, of the likelihood of those things continuing to get done. And as Emeryville kind of builds out further and further, those are the, really going to be the only type of projects that, that are left, and they're going to become more and more attractive. So, so again, it is, it is ambitious, but we do show a very, very large surplus, so there's a lot of room in there. If certain things get done and other things don't get done, we're still showing an abundance of sites that are feasible and appropriate to meet the lower income RENA. Moving on to key program changes. So again, we did a comprehensive review of policies and programs in the existing housing element, and, and took a look at, at which programs and policies were appropriate to keep and maintain going forward, which ones needed to be modified, and which ones we should just take off the table completely. A lot of the ones that were removed were completed. They just, they got done, you updated your planning regulations, you're in compliance with state law in terms of housing state law related to zoning, all those things we can just kind of take out of the way. Others were deleted because they're no longer appropriate, or they just weren't working, and, and we did make quite a few additions based on input from the community and, and from the planning commission and other groups that we, we encountered along the way. So just a quick overview of these. Again, programs that were deleted because they were completed, you updated your density bonus ordinance, it's now in compliance with state law, added regulations for secondary units, and your new regulations, you allow live work in light and industrial and mixed use zones. You completed your Senate Bill 2 compliance, which, which relates to zoning for emergency shelters, transitional housing and supportive housing, did zoning for group homes and residential care facilities, created or took care of a design review exemptions policy, took care of your interim zoning classifications, which, again, was just to bridge you between the new general plan and your updated planning regulations, added bonuses for green building, and put in an open space requirement for multifamily housing. There were five additional programs that were deleted because, just in discussions with staff and, and looking at what got done over the last planning period, they just didn't make sense. Others, like the use of redevelopment agency funds, simply removed because the redevelopment agency has been dissolved and it's no longer an option. Others, for example, the rehabilitation assistance, because a portion of that program or that piece of the program was funded through, or through redevelopment funds, it's now funded through CDBG, or just no longer allowed activities under, based on our new funding source. So there's a brief explanation of, of why those programs were deleted in your, in your staff report, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about those. Programs added, so we did add quite a few programs. We added a program to monitor, based on state law actually, to monitor and work to retain at-risk units. Staff has been very proactive about, about that. We actually have to look at a 10-year period, just to add another date range to the housing element. We looked at 2015 to 2025, looking at affordable units that have been produced with HUD funds or low-income housing tax credits, or some other funding mechanism that has a set period of affordability that may expire. We didn't find any, but we are aware that there may be some early after the 2025 date, and staff is certainly on top of maintaining, maintaining that list and, and working in advance to retain those units. Continuing to offer a density bonus and looking at other potential regulatory incentives for affordable housing. The housing impact fee and housing trust fund, this is something that you are looking at later this evening, and depending on how that tracks with the housing element, we may be able to update that if it's already sort of done when we're ready to submit to the state. Otherwise, it's there as sort of a placeholder program until that does get done. Continuing to support state and regional efforts to establish funding sources for affordable housing, always continuing to look for a replacement to that redevelopment agency money that was so important to affordable housing. We did include a program to look at the use of former redevelopment agency funds. Folks out there are calling them boomerang funds, so any money that is coming back in terms of general tax revenue to the city that would have been sort of pushed into the redevelopment agency, where a portion of that would have been used for affordable housing. Continuing to look at, as annual budgets are prepared, at using a portion of that money for affordable housing. Looking at the potential for a universal design requirement, again, the code already allows for, encourages provision of, of universal design features in new homes, but looking at, making a percentage of those, making a percentage of new units be required to have a universal design component. And again, this is just a study item, so I think we left that one pretty open.
That was the one question I had after reading the whole report, is can you explain to me what a universal design requirement is?
Sure, absolutely. So universal design features are intended to allow a home to be livable for, for people at any stage of their life, and specifically looking at people who are seniors or people who are disabled. It's thinking about turn radiuses in bathrooms and in kitchens, and allowing for wheelchairs to get in and out of rooms, so perhaps wider door frames. door frames. It's reinforcing a bathroom wall so that if at some point you need to install a bar, the infrastructure is already there for you to put that in. So it's just thinking about little improvements that some little, I suppose, what you call little is relative, but improvements to a home or changes to a home that would just contemplate what changes might need to be made if someone did come across a circumstance in their life where they had less mobility.
And I'll just note, it is actually in the planning regulations currently that it's one of the bonus items. So if you provide a certain amount of universal design units, you can count that towards a bonus, but it's not a requirement.
Right, right. And yeah, we put that in as a study item, realizing that we would want to consult with the development community and think that through before we actually established a percentage and called that a requirement, but as a program or work program for staff. Looking at opportunities for the potential use of city-owned sites or city-controlled sites for housing for disabled and/or developmentally disabled persons. Continuing to maintain and monitor the inventory of housing sites that are available, again, something that HCD is looking to see. Advertising the availability of below-market rate units to school district, city, and child development center employees. We did have some success in the last planning period. I think two below-market rate units were sold to school district teachers. So thinking about how we can continue to get that program on their, within their realm. Promoting quality and diversity in architectural, in the architecture of new housing. This is something that came out of our Housing Committee discussions. Continuing to move forward with those family-friendly design guidelines. And continuing to evaluate opportunities for the use of city sites for affordable family housing. Promoting the availability of mortgage credit certificates. This is an existing program that's administered through Alameda County that can improve opportunities for lower and moderate income households to get into a home and experience homeownership. Providing education and technical assistance to HOAs primarily for the purpose of maintaining FHA eligibility. So if buildings go over a certain percentage of units that become rentals rather than owner-occupied units, you can no longer get an FHA insured mortgage if you're buying a property or buying a home in that building, which can serve as a big barrier for folks getting in. Three and a half percent down payment is a lot easier to come up with than 20%. So thinking about what that means for HOAs. Encouraging design features to prevent stormwater intrusion, another item that came out of our discussions with Housing Committee. Taking advantage of the fact that most of the city is a priority development area, continuing to look at new funding sources and leverage whatever opportunities may be out there to get new housing paid for or new planning paid for, based on the fact that we have such a significant area of the city as a PDA. Continuing to move forward with the E-Bot strategy and getting some of those recommendations implemented to improve that housing transit connection. And then looking to amend the city design guidelines to encourage community building features in multifamily housing. So multipurpose rooms and mailboxes in locations that promote social interactions. And that's all I have for you tonight. Again, we're going to City Council in July. Oh gosh, does that say July 4th? I suppose no one will be there for that meeting. Sorry about that. That's an error. We're going on the 15th. And with that, I'm happy to hear your questions and comments.
So I think that I understand the sort of default density discussion, but I just want to make sure. So that, so the number of units for those, I think it was all of the sort of affordability levels were lumped together, isn't that right?
Right. We sort of merged all those lower income levels together for purposes of that analysis.
So that number of units was achieved by identifying the opportunity sites and then applying that density to those sites?
Yes. So we looked at, primarily, we pulled out of, basically, we looked at the whole inventory and then ended up pulling out a couple of sites that were smaller or had lower densities that didn't sort of seem to meet that threshold and may not be appropriate. And all the remaining sites, that most of them are larger sites and were well over that 30 units per acre. Those are all, the realistic, well, we took the maximum allowable density, or the maximum allowable units based on the existing density, and then took 75% of that to allow for the fact that a lot of those are in mixed-use areas and they may be subject to certain site constraints, or just as kind of a factor to pull that down a little bit, knowing that not every site is going to achieve maximum capacity, even though we have examples showing that you can even go beyond based on a bonus.
Okay. So the calculation, so the number of units then is actually calculated using the sort of the maximum density, but a reduced maximum density?
Right. It's a percentage of the maximum density.
Okay.
Without the bonus.
And the default density then is just, is just the density that the state would sort of require that we have on those sites?
Right, exactly. So anything over that and they're more than happy.
I have a question.
Sure.
How, like on figure four point, or four one, how is the designation of underutilized sites? How do you come up with the pool of underutilized sites?
Yeah, for purposes of this housing element, we kind of started with the inventory that staff put together last round where they really got out there and kind of went site by site and really kind of surveyed the city and looked for what might be available and what might be appropriate. And then we added a few to that list just based on things we saw in the general plan. So we did end up adding, I don't think the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center was in the last housing element. But yeah, just looking at buildings that, or sites that are known by staff to have great potential. But again, this time we didn't do the sort of like walk the streets, you know, go plot by plot. We just, just based on staff knowledge and an update of the existing.
I can add a little bit to that. Just looking at this map, two of the big ones are the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center and the Powell Street Plaza, both of which are called for in the general plan to be developed at a much higher density than they currently are. In fact, there are specific general plan policies that call for that. So sort of, I'd say the general plan kind of by definitions defines those as underutilized sites. Number 18 is Site B, which is very underutilized because it's just a big vacant lot right now. We don't know what's going to happen with that. Number 12 is a BRE property, which we know they intend to develop at a higher use than what it is now, but they haven't come forward with anything yet. Number 18, I mean, number, am I reading that right? 19. 19 is the city-owned Christie Avenue properties, which we also intend to, in the not-too-distant future, put out an RFP for development of. And then the little parcels that are along San Pablo Avenue are actually identified, I believe, in the, what's it called? San Pablo Avenue Urban Design Guidelines or something like that, a document that was adopted by the redevelopment agency back in the 1990s. We still use it as a guiding document, and it's actually referenced in the general plan. These are some of the smaller sites, Oaks Club Parking Lot, Bank of America Parking Lot, and some of the other similar sites along the Recreation Center site, which is now in portables, all of which are identified in that plan for higher-tensity mixed-use development.
I have another question. On the amenities map, there's a public facility that's shown sort of in the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center on the south side of 40th. Is that that community room that's in the, which map?
That's an excellent question. I actually don't know the answer to that offhand. I can flag it though.
What map number is that?
It's on page 4-9. It's figure 4.4-2.
You're saying public facility?
Yeah, so it's purple. There's a little-
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the community room.
Okay.
That's run by Community Services Department. Chamber of Commerce leases a portion of it from us for their offices, and the rest of it is just an open, available community room.
I just have one question about the, one of the policies that is being removed or deleted, the policy 2B2 about Section 8 linked to homeownership. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Sure.
Because our low level of homeownership is one of my big concerns.
Yeah, and we talked about in depth about what to do with that one. Unfortunately, it's just not feasible, is what staff was finding. Nobody had taken advantage of it. It just didn't work in previous years. The folks at the extremely low and very low income level that we're working with through the Section 8 program tend just not to be good candidates for homeownerships quite at the stage that they're seeing them at in those programs. So no capacity to build up that down payment. And it just didn't, it just wasn't penciling when we really sort of looked at whether or not that was a feasible option. Certainly, the idea is good, and certainly it's a goal that everyone would want to see accomplished, but it just, on the ground, there had been no traction in actually making that happen.
But I would note that the notion of promoting homeownership has been elevated to a goal level now. So, and there is, there are several policies related and programs that are related to it, just not this one.
Is there, I couldn't remember, is there a chart that talks about what the extremely low, the low, the moderate?
What that breakdown is.
What that breakdown is in dollars and where it comes from? I can't remember.
There's one in there. It's based on HUD and HCD standards. And I can kind of just tell you the breakdown. And then there should be a chart. I can't remember exactly in the housing element, but it's, so extremely low is, did I have it in here? Extremely low is, well, I have the income ranges. I can show you that. And then I can talk to you about percentages. But it's calculated annually as a percentage of the area median income. And there we go. So extremely low is at 30% or less of the area median income. Very low is in the 31% to 50% range. Low is in the 51% to 80% range. And moderate is 81% to 120%. And then above moderate, of course, is anything over 120%.
And that's for-
Change based on the number of people in the family, too.
Right, exactly, exactly. Thank you. That's, these actual income ranges are based on a four-person household. HCD produces an income limits report every year, and it shows from households in sizes from one to eight, the number fluctuates across the board. But those percentages always stay at that level.
I'm just wondering, on Table 4.1, this is on page 4.2, is the state looking at the total units? Because when I look at that, I see that we're, we have planned or approved more units than the RENA out, you know, projects as the demand. But then when I look at extremely low, all the way through moderate, we're only, we have only got planned or approved about one-fifth of the projection.
Right, absolutely.
And so do they look at that as a, as a shortcoming?
Actually, Paul from HCD, when we looked at this, he was like, oh, great, you already have affordable units coming. And, you know, in terms of the total, they tend not to, they tend not to care much about the above moderate and moderate income side unless they're just seeing you never build housing. And I think Emeryville, with Emeryville's track record of getting lots of units on the ground, and specifically with getting affordable units on the ground, they come into it with a little bit of a different eye. You know, they're, they're a lot more willing to hear kind of where you're at and where you're going. And I think compared to a lot of other jurisdictions that we're working with and around, having the number that we do in process already is better than most. It's not where we would want to be, but it is, we're still in pretty good shape going into the planning cycle.
I really like the fact that this is, we're made to do this, because I think it's, it's important that, to keep it in top of mind and to have it out there. So I'm very appreciative. And I really, I also am happy to see a lot of the added programs that seem to bring things forward to where we need to be like universal design. And yeah, so that was, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
I just want to commend you all for your job well done. Everyone involved has done a lot of good work. It's been a long process. It's been well thought out, and I think everyone's done a good job.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I just, I have one other question, just about, a couple of the tables about household by income categories. There, is there, do you have a breakdown for the extremely low too? Because the tables start at very low.
It just depends on the data source. So ACS, a lot of, a lot of the data for this housing element came from the American Community Survey, and they tend to only go to that very low income level. So we don't have great numbers for extremely low. Let me see if I can find an example. We have one section in the needs assessment that speaks specifically to extremely low.
Yeah, I saw that later on, and that's why I was wondering why it wasn't in the earlier-
Yeah, exactly.
So that's okay.
Just limited, got it, so 221 and some of those, yeah, just limited by the data that's available to us unfortunately.
Well, I also think that this is really thorough and really well done, and I really appreciate the addition of the policies for ownership and family-friendly and diversity of housing stock and universal design and all those things.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I would just echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioners and say, well done. And it's, I like the, I really like the organization of the element, and it's, you know, it's shockingly like easy to read. We just sat down to read it, so.
Great, thank you.
So I don't, are we voting on this? Or are we just giving comments?
Well, yes and no. We don't have a resolution before you, because this is a draft report. It's not the final report. However, we do need a vote on a motion to approve this for forwarding to the City Council.
I would move that way forward.
I do have some comments that I'd like to make, if that's possible. There were a couple added programs that seemed like they were, I'm guessing probably came from one person. And they, one of them seemed out of place, and the other, actually, they both seemed a little bit out of place. In, I think it's H426, this was one where-
Architectural diversity?
Yeah, so basically, it seemed like someone who had a penchant for more traditional architecture-
Good point. Thanks, Dave.
-was trying to utilize the need to promote communities for affordable housing to sort of slip in some, a goal of promoting quality of diversity and architectural style of new housing developments. So it's basically creating a goal to amend the city design guidelines to encourage, wait, am I reading the right one? Oh, yeah. To encourage eaves and gabled roofs, which I'm not sure how that fits in to the overall goal. And it seems like it's just a design preference of an individual or small group of people, and it actually seems contradictory to a lot of the character of Emeryville. And I actually did, I saw similar, similar added goal under 7.2.5.
What page are you on?
These are the, 7.2.5 is page 6-14. And then this one is, you know, in order to discourage water intrusion, they, or stormwater intrusion, the use of gabled roofs, eaves, stoops, awnings, recessed windows, lintels over doors or windows, or protruding window frames. And, I mean, I would, I've seen gabled roofs that leak like a sieve, and I've seen flat roofs that you could fill up with water and swim in it, and it doesn't leak at all.
I'm not sure how recessed windows or stoops or, you know, those things address that either.
Yeah. And I think there are, it's, they could all be done without any of those. And so they're, they really just seem as, they're design preferences. So I'd like to see both H426 and H725 removed.
Would you need to remove the whole thing or just specific language? And can you speak to that? Can you tell us where that came from to be so specific?
Sure, yeah. I mean, it did, it did come out of conversations with the Housing Committee primarily. There was a lot of discussion about the city's existing housing stock and- There was a lot of discussion about the city's existing housing stock, and a lot of it came out of the fact that there have been so many problems with the new condominiums and new rental developments, some of those large-scale projects that so many have had to be tended over the years, and thinking about why that's happened and how we can prevent that in the future, those conversations kind of came around to, you know, are there pieces of the design that are leaving these buildings more open to water intrusion issues or problems? And is that something that we can do something about, or rethink in our design guidelines? And similarly, the diversity in architectural styles came out of discussions with Housing Committee, just thinking about, you know, the feel of the community and the character of the community, and the prevalence of sort of modern design, and wanting to see a little bit more diversity, and certainly, those are, there's...
They want to see diversity by adding what we've had in the past.
There's certainly no HCD requirement to address any of those items, so that's purely about community sentiment and whether or not you feel that's appropriate, and if that's something you want to include as a policy, it's strictly about judgment, but those did come out of Housing Committee meetings.
I really appreciate you noticing that, I didn't notice that, and definitely, now that you specify that, and I think we are building things, I mean, I think Oakwalk isn't contemporary by its terms of flat roofs and et cetera, but I think specifying that in this is a problem, and I think now we're changing design guidelines, and we're not doing anything with the housing element here.
Well, it's a goal, it's not specifying, but I think that promoting quality and diversity...
Yes, that's what I'm saying, some language, but not the whole thing.
Having specific language that seems to be encouraging more traditional architecture.
Are just specifics in architecture.
I agree, good catch, and, yeah, it does seem silly, and I would support just sort of striking the language about the specific architectural features, but I think especially promoting, you know, diversity in architectural style is a worthy goal.
Yes.
And I guess, what was the other one?
Preventing future stormwater intrusion.
I mean, that's... You would hope they would do that naturally.
Right, I mean, it's just, it should say, enforce the building code, so that, you know, to prevent future...
Are we getting...
Yeah, the likelihood of lawsuits pretty much prevent, which is going to do that more than we're going to. So, those were two items that, I mean, I'd prefer seeing modified to get rid of some of the specific language.
May I suggest that if this is, I'm getting the sense that this is the sense of the Commission, for H426, you just strike the second sentence, and for H725, you strike everything after the first comma, after the word intrusion.
Yes.
That makes sense.
And then, I'm...
Maybe features and material quality or something like that for the one about stormwater.
Features and...
Quality materials or...
Quality materials.
Something like, something along those lines.
I'm really biting my tongue to say forbid stucco.
We have other elected and appointed officials who would like to forbid corrugated metal.
Yes, we all have our opinions, doesn't mean that's illegal.
Permitting your choices of building materials.
So, I did have a few more comments, and I don't, it's all sort of in the goals category. One, you know, one of them, and I think I may be the odd man out on this one, but the, we're looking at the underutilized sites, and I know we all sort of appreciate the light industrial, or industrial heritage of Emeryville, but the reality is that light industrial buildings, or buildings utilized for light industrial purposes, don't employ many people per square foot, and they take up a lot of space, and that's why when I look at the underutilized site map, I mean, when I go around Emeryville, I see half of Emeryville underutilized, and, you know, I know there's been, I think there's been a change to allow the use, allow mixed-use development in light industrial zones or areas.
No, well, not residential.
Oh, okay, okay.
Used to be, but not now, not under the new planning regulations.
But, I mean, this was one I'm throwing out there, and I may get shot down for it, but, I mean, I'd like to see, I mean, because the goals here, I mean, these are actually goals that are going to be established that will encourage changes in the general plan, and, you know, some of these goals are actually worded in those terms to amend or adopt and implement amendments to the city design review guidelines, et cetera, so it's just a thought that one might be to encourage modification of the general plan to recognize more opportunities for residential development in areas currently occupied by light industrial use.
If I could bring, well, that was a very big, big conversation during the general plan process, and that was really vetted out, that that was protect and preserve, and I think George Martin would come in here and talk to the contrary to that, because his business is a lot of those buildings, especially on, what, 67th Street, and he's actually adding more just on the Berkeley side to his, and I think also, I don't know whatever happened to the coffee company from North Carolina that was looking at one of the spaces...
They just came in for building permit.
That we approved when I think I first came on here, so I think it's important for a city to keep, especially if we want to maintain a mixed-use type of city, those are areas that people really probably don't want to live in, and I don't think are really appropriate, especially as long as Coulter Steel and Forge is still there, and I think these are vile businesses, they may not employ what Navartis employs, or what Pixar employs, but they still offer, and we keep going round and round about local businesses, local serving communities, smaller jobs, so I think it's very important to keep, and we're talking two blocks, three blocks of the northern part of the city, so, as you said, I mean, I can speak only for myself, and I was in that conversation during the general plan processes, that we need to save that, and I mean, you read about San Francisco trying to save their industrial, that people starting small t-shirt businesses have nowhere to go, and I think we need to provide that and have that available.
And I'll just add, too, that as part of the general plan, this element does have to be consistent, you know, internally consistent with the other elements of the general plan. HCD sort of requires that especially, and so it would, we would have to amend the, at least the land use element in order to allow that, so it's not, it's not something that could be done just as part of this discussion, it would have to be part of a...
Well, I don't, I mean, there's a lot in here that wouldn't be done just as part of this discussion, but it does encourage, or, you know, it does encourage the city, the staff, to, you know, to look into making these changes, and so I knew that was a losing battle, but it's just one I wanted to throw out there, there are other, but there are other components, I mean, the one thing that I think about is, you know, I even heard during the meeting today that the City Council already felt like the list of protected structures was too large, but I remember, I mean, when I first looked at the general plan and saw that the historic district was limited to this sort of small area, and I go around town, and I see lots of buildings that I, you know, I feel are equal historic significance to the ones that are protected, that aren't protected, and I'd love to see the increase in that, you know, and that, and that would fall under the, I think it's the, what is it, 7.4, which is the preservation reuse of existing buildings, basically reducing carbon footprint, that kind of thing, so that's one I wanted to throw out there, I mean.
And you could argue that having, taking away the light industrial would increase our carbon footprint, because all these businesses that are here that are local serving are going to have to go far, far away, and here we are, you know.
That's where, with the light industrial, I feel like they, if they became mixed-use with residential or mixed-use commercial, and that they would employ more people and support more local business than they do now, I mean, I, when I walk through there, there seems like there are, you know, there aren't many people per square foot, taco trucks pull up to serve them, and I don't think they're supporting a lot of the local businesses, and they're not employing many people per square feet, so I think other uses could, I think it's a character thing, I can see the, you know, the desire to maintain it, at least in a small portion of the town, I think it's pretty unlikely, you know, 40 years down the road that they'll be there, but that's, I think that's just natural, what's likely to happen, but.
Well, I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of this housing element to the City Council with the modifications that we discussed.
I actually have a couple more modifications to...
Chair, before you entertain a motion, could I ask that you open the public hearing, please?
Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? We'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Go back to our discussion.
So, the, I guess the one that I, the one I think, I threw out a couple controversial ones, but there was one, there's one item that I think maybe we might be able to find some agreement on adding some goals to, and I think somebody already started down this path with the, which one is it, 7.33, where they're, you know, and this is all about encouraging developments to, you know, strong interface with streets, and also inclusion of social spaces, and the, talking about the large, that the larger residential development, you know, projects have, you know, mailbox locations that encourage social interaction, and that they have multipurpose rooms, I think that's a great addition, and I'd actually like to add a few items to, maybe it's to that item, or 7.34. I would like to see the encouragement of street-level porches, and not just stoops, but porches in developments of all sizes when possible. I'd like to see the encouragement of courtyard-level porches and patios when feasible, and I'd like to see, you know, community open space amenities that encourage community interaction among adults and children. I think a lot of times we get the amenities that come before us are poorly thought out, or they're not even thought out at all, and to actually have that encourage, you know, amenities that are going to reinforce a sense of community and be useful, and also encouraging a visual connectivity of primary circulation routes and open spaces and courtyards, and encouraging the kitchens and not so much bedrooms look out onto the courtyards, or even if the bedrooms do, at least the kitchens do. And I like, one thing I noticed, part of the Parkside project, is there, the courtyards, and one of the reasons I resist the idea of having a building go where the parking lot is, is they've got two main courtyards, and they both, one of them even walks down to the park level, and they both open to the park, and so I think, I like that idea, I like the idea of courtyards opening, being visually connected to the public street, and encouraging that as a goal, you know, and I could get even more specific, things like encouraging visual connection between the community room and the community open space, encouraging shared community slash general public amenities, you know, encouraging required commercial and retail and mixed-use to accommodate the needs of residents and the adjacent neighbors, and encouraging glazing on unit entry doors, even if it's obscured. I don't know.
In that respect, I see what you're saying, and I have some comments to make overall, but in the glazing part, for me, it becomes a security issue.
Yeah.
You know, I think if that window's set the face out, I think, you know, for someone's front door, I think for my personal taste, I'd like something a little bit more secure than a glass door.
We can see that in Elevation 22, which has little front stoops for every unit.
But they're little.
And glazed doors and windows right on the street, and the curtains are pulled at all time.
On every unit.
And I've never seen a person sitting on the front stoop, looking there.
And it's city limits, it's the same thing.
Yeah, so it's, just a question, I like a lot of what you said, I think a lot of it is too specific for something like this, but how about some language, because I really agree with what you're saying, and I think talking about the Nadye site, we've kind of started to pull out a lot of this stuff, but how about saying something that says "design elements within the public open space or realm that encourages social interaction and share amenities with the general public"?
I like that. And maybe encourage design of private units to engage the, engage public streets as much, you know, when feasible, or something along those, I mean, the reality is, like E22, they're throwaway rooms, they're, you go into the garages, you don't go into those rooms.
Yeah, it's an office.
Yeah, so they're...
But Eleva, where you live, on the back side, they have units on the ground floor, and the curtains are pulled at all times.
Yeah, no, this is, whoever solves this problem will become a millionaire, because this is, I've never been able to solve this problem.
Well, I think, I think one of the big, I mean, one thing that helps solve that problem is to have a buffer zone, a sort of in-between space that semi, that, like a porch, and a stoop doesn't do it. A porch feels like a transitional zone between the private and the public, and a space where you could go out, you could have your things out there, maybe things you don't care if they get stolen or whatever, or some couch or something, but it acts as that transition. If you don't have that transition, if you just have a stoop, or, you know, windows straight out to the public street, your blinds are going to be closed, you're not going to spend time out there.
Yeah, I think what you need is wider sidewalks, planting areas, and then the building, and I think maybe that's part of our job, that we start asking the developers to provide those spaces, because Artist Walk is a prime example as well, and San Pablo Avenue, my God, it's like a fortress, and there's just the stoops in the street practically, and no one is going to engage in those areas at all, because they're really unfriendly. And I'll walk by there a lot, thinking, "These are really cool, but they're just very cold and stark, and it almost seems like I want to create a fortress," and I think what we need to do is create something that's a little bit more inviting, to where people open their windows to see something other than the cars passing by.
I use that project as an example of a bad example of that all the time.
Yeah, I like the architecture of that building, I think it's one of the betters of that typical three-story townhouse kind of thing, but its interface with the street is just foreboding.
Yeah.
I think that it really would be valuable to put in your, the goals that you're trying to do in general language, something along the lines of what Stephen was saying, but without getting completely specific about a kitchen facing a courtyard and that kind of stuff, so I would support that.
Don't we have it in here somewhere already to sort of establish design guidelines for family-friendly, multi fam, so, to me, I think that incorporates a lot, I think when, the manifestation of that will incorporate a lot of the things that you're talking about.
But I mean, we've, there are already goals in here as specific as mailboxes and, you know, and community rooms, so, I mean, could we add a goal similar to the one that Stephen brought up, and maybe even have an element of it that also addresses private unit engagement of common areas and public spaces?
I think the way you said that was fine.
And just adding, you know, maybe adding the mailroom and the multi-person, as examples, by example, mailrooms, community rooms, stuff like that, just to kind of give someone, you know, a breadcrumb.
I don't think there's anything wrong with giving the examples, because it's, yeah.
Yeah, just maybe create a laundry list of examples of what they might do, it may not be in every development that they do those things, but here's some ideas of ways you can create this engagement. I think the affordable housing things that we toured, did a lot of that, the laundry rooms, you know, did a lot of that, of, you know, the parents could be doing laundry while the kids are out playing in the yard right outside the doorway.
Well, nowadays, all new apartments have washing machines in each unit, that's standard.
I think Kim might have an idea for us.
Yeah, I just, so just wanted to clarify, so then we'll open up the, kind of the primary language of 7.33 to be slightly more general, and then add sort of a list of, like, four examples, and include some of those pieces that are already there, and then looking at general open space and a little bit on the private features as well. And then looking at general open space and a little bit on the private features as well. And then just to, to sort of reinforce, so, these programs, this is a piece of the general plan. So it's gonna, a piece of this is going to get done through, through future work, a piece of it's going to get done through the family-friendly design guidelines that are, that are in progress. Those will be coming your way pretty shortly, as I understand it. And then a portion of this is that these general plan pieces are used as a, as a gauge point for you. So as projects come forward and as staff is, is looking through the general plan and looking at, at policies that you've put in place and policies that you've agreed make sense for your community, they're meant to be a benchmark for you. So just to kind of circle back on purpose.
Just seems when the opportunity exists to plant seeds, that why not try?
Sure. Sure. Did you have more?
No, I'm done.
In that case, I would move that we recommend this for, that it be forwarded by city council to the HCD.
Second.
With the amendments.
With those, with those amendments.
So that was to H four two six, H seven two five, and H seven three three.
Yes.
So that was moved by Commissioner Donaldson and seconded by Vice Chair Moss. Ready to vote?
But not the one about the, the light industrial.
I don't think that got a second.
Okay.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gunkel?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Comerly?
Aye.
Vice Chair Moss?
Aye.
And Chair Cardozo?
Aye.
Six ayes, the motion is approved. We will forward your recommendation to the city council.
Next item on my agenda is.
Thank you for the good work, all of you.
Yep. Next item on my agenda is commissioners' comments.
Uh, no, we still have development impact fees.
Nope, we want the development impact fees.
We're not done yet. Sorry. Actually, before we do that, I would like to briefly go back to the previous item, the PRC rezoning and general plan amendment. We have a little anomaly here that I just realized. It doesn't affect your action, well, it sort of affects your action. You don't have to do anything over again or anything. Go forward what you did to the city council. However, technically.
I know what you're gonna say.
You did not approve the general plan amendment. Because a rezoning under state law, as reflected in our planning regulations, only requires, like everything else, a majority of those present in voting, assuming you have a quorum. So three to two is valid to approve the rezoning. However, state law, as reflected in our planning regulations, says for general plan amendment, a recommendation for approval shall be made by the affirmative vote of not less than a majority of the total membership of the commission. Meaning no matter how many people are present in voting, no matter how many people are absent or recused, you're a seven-member body, a majority is four. So you didn't have four ayes. So technically, the general plan amendment was not approved, the rezoning was. As I say, it doesn't affect your action. We'll tell the city council how you voted. They'll get the sense of the commission, even if technically it didn't pass. It's okay, the commission, the council has the final word anyway. But I just wanted to make you aware of that little anomaly.
Do we want to ask?
Please.
Do we want to ask the commission if anybody wants to change their vote in light of that? Or should we just?
No.
Okay. That's, who knows that would change, so, okay.
And, and please also communicate to the council that the, the previous vote for the incorrectly noticed hearing was, did have a, of four commissioners in favor.
That's true. Commissioner Tan was not here tonight, but she did vote in favor. So if she'd been here, we would have probably had four ayes. Although that's not an official vote at this point.
That's right.
But we can note that, I guess. Okay. This is so-called enabling legislation. So by way of background, back in 2013, last year, the city council directed that we get going on developing some impact fees. We engaged several consultants to prepare nexus studies on affordable housing, parks, and transportation impact fees. On April first, the council held a study session and directed that the proposed impact fees be referred to various committees and the planning commission for review and comment. And as I'm sure you recall, on April twenty-fourth, the planning commission held a study session on the proposed impact fees. The city council will be holding a public hearing on the proposed fees next Tuesday on July first, and they're expected to take action on them at their following meeting on July fifteenth. The planning commission's comments that you made at your April twenty-fourth study session have been forwarded to the city council in the July first staff report. However, before the council can adopt the new fees, the municipal code needs to be amended to establish regulations and procedures for them, so-called enabling legislation. Staff therefore proposes to amend the planning regulations to modify Article Four of Chapter Five, the Affordable Housing Set-Aside Program, and rename it the Affordable Housing Program for the Affordable Housing Impact Fee. And add a new Article nineteen to Chapter Five called Development Impact Fees for the Parks and Transportation Impact Fees and possibly for other impact fees in the future. Any amendments to the planning regulations require the planning commission to review them and make a recommendation to the city council. So that is what's before you tonight. The fees themselves are not before the commission tonight. Just want to make that clear. You're not opining or voting on any fees tonight, just on this enabling legislation. So just to summarize what these, it'll be two ordinances going to the city council, one to amend Article Four and the other to add Article nineteen. And just to summarize what those are, the Article Four, Chapter Five Affordable Housing Program, the title is changed from Affordable Housing Set-Aside Program to Affordable Housing Program. And the same change is made throughout the article, except spell correctly. The unit threshold where this fee would kick in is lowered from thirty units to, thirty units or more, to ten units or more. The article provides the authority and process for the city to establish and collect fees on rental residential and non-residential development projects. It also offers an alternative compliance procedure for developers to provide affordable housing either onsite or offsite through the dedication of land or through other means. Instead of paying the fee, that has to come to the planning commission for approval. You have to find that it will result in at least as much, if not more, housing at the same or deeper affordability levels as paying the fee would result in. It creates an affordable housing fund into which the fee would be deposited. And it specifies that the use of the funds shall be for the provision of affordable housing.
Charlie, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the, the resolution itself, paragraph two and paragraph four, under the unit threshold, it says, it doesn't lower the unit. So it's, it says the, the housing element policy to ensure inclusion of below-market rate units in residential projects of thirty or more units. Wouldn't it be ten? So I'm just, I'm not sure if I'm misunderstanding what's going on here, if that's a typo.
What page?
Uh, this is page three of the actual resolution, sec, well, third paragraph, housing element policy two four, uh, two A four.
Oh.
Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good catch. I think we modified. Well, what is H two?
And then also the, the, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, H two dash one dash two. Would that also be changed to ten? I just wasn't sure if.
Yeah, it looks like you're right. Wait a minute. H two one two.
H two.
Yeah, you know, I think this was written before that change was made to the housing element. It actually just says, H two one two now says, continue to implement the Affordable Housing Set-Aside Ordinance, which, well, that's what it's currently called.
Just the Adorable Housing Program now.
To require the inclusion of below-market units in residential projects and consider reducing the unit threshold to make the ordinance applicable to smaller projects. That's what it says now. So.
That needs to be, those need to be changed.
We should probably change, change this thirty. I think that's what it previously had said.
So yeah, so two A four and H two one two. Okay.
Yes, thank you. Good catch.
And I don't know if now's appropriate time to discuss that in further thing, or should we let you finish and ask our questions?
I'd appreciate it if you let me just get through this. It won't take very long. So that's, that's affordable housing. Then the other one is the new Article nineteen Development Impact Fees. This establishes the authority for development impact fees and specifies the fees are to be used to mitigate the impacts of development projects have on the city's ability to provide public facilities. It specifies that the public facilities to be provided will be categorized into separate types, including but not limited to transportation, parks, and recreation, and there can be more added in the future. It specifies that the type and amount of each fee will be approved by the city council by resolution and supported by a technical report that identifies the purpose and maximum amount of the fee and establishing the nexus between the fee and development projects on which it's imposed. In other words, the so-called nexus studies. Generally, payment of the fee will be due at issuance of a building permit. However, it can be deferred until final inspection or certificate of occupancy, but if the developer elects to do that, they will be required to pay whatever fee is in effect at that time. And if the fee goes up, then they will have to pay the higher fee in exchange for waiting till later to pay it. By state law, however, that is not applicable to residential projects. We have to keep the fee constant for a residential project. And the city may adjust each type of fee from time to time to reflect updated information about costs of projects that are funded by the fee. Exemptions from impact fees are provided for residential remodeling projects and any other project for which the applicant can demonstrate that there is a basis in local, state, or federal law for such an exemption.
Does that include condominiums then? Because it, previously you said residential rental projects.
Well, there's no fee on condominiums anyway. Right, the fee would only apply to residential rental projects. So, and it would not apply to a remodeling of a residential rental project. It would not apply to condominium in any case.
Because they already are required to put in affordable housing?
Yes. That's right. They're not exempt from the Affordable Housing Program.
This is the other, this is the other fees.
So this is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right, you're right. I'm getting, I'm mixing apples and oranges here. Yeah, the other fees, the traffic impact fee, the park fee would not apply to residential remodel projects, any kind, rental or homeownership. Refunds of impact fees for projects that are abandoned after the fee is paid can be made under certain circumstances that are specified in the ordinance. Credits, this is a big one, this is important to developers. An applicant may apply to the city council for a fee credit in return for providing a specified public facility that is to be otherwise funded by the fee. However, that would not apply if a development, development bonus had been granted for providing that specified public facility. A case in point is Christie Avenue Park, which is to be expanded as part of the public market project. Because Christie Avenue Park is one of the projects that's covered by the park impact fee, they would like to get a park impact fee credit for designing and building, redesigning and building that park. That's an open question at this point. It hasn't been decided if they're going to get a credit or not. But that's just an example that, of where this kind of thing would come up.
And is this new? Or was it in?
Um, it's.
I don't recall reading something like this in the two-hundred-page document.
Which two-hundred-page document?
The one about the nexus, nexus report and all the details on this?
Yeah, this isn't out of the nexus study.
Okay.
This is policy.
This is the first time I've reading of a credit and availability of a type of credit. So when did that come in to?
Right now.
Okay. So it is something new they've come up with.
Well, yeah, it's not uncommon. I mean, it's something that, the only impact fee we have right now is the traffic impact fee. And those were mostly intersection reconfigurations.
No, what I'm saying is, when I read the whole two-hundred-nine-page report regarding these impact fees. I don't recall reading anything about this credit.
You did not, because this is not a nexus study issue.
Right.
This is a policy issue. And so we're putting it in the, in the ordinance as, not policy, regulation.
Okay.
But, but it's not automatic. They have to apply to the city council. The city council has to consider it, weigh the, weigh the arguments, they might or may not get their credit. Can I just finish? I'm almost done.
Okay.
There is a procedure for applicants to protest the imposition of any required impact fees through an administrative proceeding before me and thereafter before an independent hearing officer. And, whoops, why did it, oh, I touched the touchpad, shame on me. So our recommendation is that you open the public hearing, take testimony about the proposed amendments, close the public hearing, consider the staff report and resolution, and then adopt the resolution approving the proposed amendments, presumably with the corrections that Commissioner Comerly pointed out, and recommend the city council adopt the ordinances. So that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any further questions you may have.
What about, so in regards to the credits, what about mitigations that would, that might be required under SEQA? Would, would you be able to double-dip those?
No.
Okay.
I, I kind of abbreviated those bullet points on the slide. They're a little more embellished in the staff report and that itself is abbreviated from what's in the actual ordinance. But just to, let's see, where is that? There's.
Page seven on that.
Thank you. Page four of the staff report. Oh, no, actually, that just, that, that only says you don't get it for, if you also got a bonus. But I, you, I don't, you would not get credit for it either if it was a required mitigation measure.
So the way you'd really get that is, say you're, the marketplace, the development is going to do the park, and they're also going to do mini parks, parklets, and plebeic plazas. So if they're not trying to get bonus points for those items, then those could be counted as a credit towards the park fee?
If those plazas, mini parks, whatever, are identified in the park fee as projects that will be funded by the park fee. And that basically is our Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. So if you look at the parks that are identified in the Park Recreation Strategic Plan, that's what the park fee funds. If they want to put a plaza or something on the corner that's real nice, but it's not in the Parks and Rec Strategic Plan, they don't get any credit for that.
So if you, so if you were going to build a park that the city was collecting money to build anyway, then you wouldn't have to pay the park impact fee.
But you're really, you're really going to build that if it's within your development. You're not going to build something across town.
Correct.
The likelihood.
Could be anywhere.
Well, I think that's why Christie Avenue Park is a good example. Because that is in the Parks and Rec Strategic Plan.
Right.
And it is something that they will be doing. Now, one could argue, well, it's a requirement of the PUD, so you have to do it. So therefore you shouldn't get credit for it. And I'm sure those arguments will be weighed by the city council when they ask for their credit.
So the one question I had that I wanted to interrupt you about is the threshold for units, the, for going from thirty to ten. How was that number reached to reduce it from thirty to ten?
Do you want to respond to that, Catherine?
And if I could piggyback on that question, what, what is the threshold for local, like for Berkeley or Oakland as well?
So that question actually came up when we were looking at the impact fee for rental housing and would there be a threshold for when somebody had to start paying the fee? And the ordinance does not have any threshold. Once you, for even one unit, you would have to pay the fee because that one unit would create a need. In that discussions with consultant and attorney, it was sort of pointed out that our threshold for, you know, as we were working through this ordinance, that our threshold was actually quite high. So I did some research. There's actually a report done by Northern California, the Northern California Non-Private Housing Association of all the inclusionary zoning ordinances in Northern California. And in fact, Emeryville's was the highest threshold. The average threshold was six units to start having to provide inclusionary units. So we kind of looked at that and we said, well, let's, you know, we sort of weighed what we thought was an appropriate number and we came up with ten.
And do we know what Berkeley and Oakland require or start?
Oakland doesn't have inclusionary zoning on residential, and I don't know what Berkeley's. It's the port that I had, that I got actually has each jurisdiction enumerated, but, yeah, some, many jurisdictions it's five, and many jurisdictions it's ten, and many jurisdictions it's twenty. But I believe we are. But I believe we are the only one that was at 30.
My only point in bringing this up and concern and since Commissioner Tan isn't here, she and I were both quite concerned of small-time developers making small projects of 12 units. This could be... I mean, you have the economy of scale when you're doing, you know, 100 units, as opposed to when you're doing 12 units. And if a small developer, which we would like to see succeed and thrive, especially in Emeryville, especially in our smaller lots on, say, San Pablo or something, this might be a financial burden for them to pay if they go to the highest recommendation of 20 or 25 that we're recommending.
Well, there is actually... And there exists already in our ordinance a way to appeal and say that it's a financial burden. There is a process to show that it's a financial burden.
Right, and in doing that, what's the likelihood that that a small-time developer building 12 to 15 units is going to meet that? I mean, I think setting it at 10, personally, for Emeryville's pretty low. And for the lots that we've identified that are small and would have potential to small units, I think that could initially, you know, put a number of people out of play in developing those sites. So that's just my personal opinion. I think 10 is...
I also want... I mean, we're trying to encourage ownership housing, and this could be a potential discouragement of boosting ownership.
Well, it does apply to ownership housing.
No, it doesn't.
No, it does. This is only ownership.
Oh, yeah. We're changing the ordinance on the ownership inclusionary to be 10.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Yes, right.
So this threshold doesn't come into play for rental units?
Rental units right now are subject... Under the ordinance are subject to the included impact fee.
For any number of units, right?
For any number of units, that's right. So it starts at one unit for rental, it starts at 10 for ownership.
I have a question. The development impact fees, are they... I mean, the way this is all worded, they're tied to specific projects. Is that a requirement that the development impact fees be tied to specific projects?
In housing? Which...
Yeah, this was...
No, in housing, it goes into a fund. And then the way the fund is spent is spelled out.
But are you saying that the fee is required to pay for specific projects? The park fee is required to pay for specific parks?
Yeah, I mean, or there was some language about, you know, if the developer actually decided to take on that project, that improvement themselves, then it might be able to be, you know, it might reduce their impact fee.
That's the credit.
Yeah. And so I guess what I wonder, you know, is it that one site is going to have a higher impact fee because it just happens to be located where... where there's a lot of improvements that need to be made for any development to be feasible?
No, no. The state impact fee law says that you have to identify the projects that you're going to use the fee to pay for. So the nexus studies include those... Well, except for the housing fee, which is a more general kind of a fee. It just... It goes into the Affordable Housing Fund, and that's it pays for affordable housing that way. But the park and the transportation fees pay for specific park improvements and specific pedestrian, auto improvements. So we had to identify what the projects are. And the amount of the fee that a particular development has to pay doesn't have anything to do with where that development is located. The fees are based on units or square footage or rooms or whatever the, you know, whatever the unit is.
Did we open the public hearing yet? I can't remember.
Yep. We opened the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? No one wishing to speak. We'll close the hearing. And consider a motion to approve the modifications.
I'll make a motion to adopt or to recommend approval of the ordinance with the modifications that Commissioner Coomerly mentioned.
Second.
We have a vote?
All right, that was moved by Commissioner... by Vice Chair Moss and seconded by Commissioner Donaldson. Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gunkel?
I'm still not sure about the threshold, so it's a nay for me.
Okay. Commissioner Keller?
I'm going to vote yes, just for... It's a general thing, but I agree with Commissioner Gunkel. I think the threshold is a problem, which is the case. I'll probably make the City Council.
Okay. Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Vice Chair Moss?
Aye.
And Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
So five ayes, one no. Motion is approved. We will forward your recommendation to the City Council. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is commissioners' comments. See none, we'll adjourn the meeting.